All right, four o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. I think we are all here and present, so I will skip the roll call. I think we're here. So first up, item two is public comment on non-agenda items. Does anyone have anything they would like to speak about that is not on the agenda? There's a few of us here, so a show of hands is sufficient. Turn the mic on, though. There you go.
My name is Debbie DeSousa, and I live at 43 Nottingham Place in Clayton. First thing I want to say is I want to thank Jeff for sending out your council meeting after-the-meeting report. And I just really appreciate it, so thank you for doing that. I just have a couple of questions. When Peter, about two weeks ago, put on one of the Facebook or something, he did a call to action for citizens to get involved in finance. So that kind of put a burr under my seat, and I went and printed out the entire budget, went line by line. I'm a businessperson, I'm retired, but I'm what I call a hardcore businessperson. So I looked at this like a client had hired me to come and look at their books and see what I could do to help fix it. So I went line by line. I also printed out the month of September off of that checkbook you guys have, which is, that's pretty cool. So I went line by line, I looked at every single thing, and what jumped out at me was putting in solar. That was the very first thing, because I could see how much you were spending, and somebody told me that the city owns land, well, oh, no, I saw it on the checkbook or on the budget, where you're making money off of land by running cattle. This is around $10,300 or something you get a year for running cattle, so I thought, well, that's an income opportunity. Also, solar is a way to, whatever you want to call it, you move money around, but it's huge savings, because I have solar on my house, so I know what a huge savings it is. So when I heard that you were already contracted to start solar project, I was very, very happy to see that. But my question was, is, on the solar, I know you have solar that's gonna, you've already contracted for solar that's going to save the city money, but have you looked into how you can make income from solar? Have you looked into that yet?
I will let you finish all of your comments, and then I will make a brief comment afterwards.
Okay. Then, I just have a couple of questions. My goal is to create harmony for the city of Clayton. So that's what you're going to see me doing, is working towards that goal. And I am on social media, and I am, people who are being bad. You already know what I'm, I'm putting out prayers for them. I know I've sent prayers to everybody. So that's my idea of how to deal with them, because I want to try to create more harmony. So when I see people saying really bizarre things that are not true, I'm trying to talk to them with truth. So a couple of questions came up, and these are not questions for me. It's a question, two questions I'd like to ask you that I think will, I'm trying to calm everybody down. So one of the questions that came up was, people are wondering if we can see Brett's job description, because there's a bunch of, like, rumors going around about what he's supposed to do or not do, or blah, blah, blah. So I just thought it might be helpful if people could actually see. It's something I thought would be, you know, I would like to see. That way, I don't have to question, well, who's supposed to be doing this? We'd have, we'd know exactly. The other thing that came up is, I guess there was a review that was done, maybe a month ago or something. I don't know a whole lot about this. There's just, somebody was talking about that they thought the review was either done or coming up, and...
Yeah, we're just about out of time, so I want to make sure you can ask your question, but we are exceeding that.
Okay, real quick. So that's it. People are wondering if that would be available to the public. They're just interested in what the review results are.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. If you, I can't, we can't really talk about it back and forth, but I'll try to make some brief comments before we go to any other speaker. The city is engaged in a large energy infrastructure project. We contracted with Climat Tech to do a lot of work around energy efficiency, and it's a very big project, and it will continue for at least the remainder of the year, perhaps even. It will continue for at least another 12 months and probably beyond, but that is ongoing. We are limited in opportunities to earn money from solar because of the rules for PG&E in the state, so there's certain limits for that, but we are exploring all options, and we would take advantage of anything available. The job description, you could look, there is available, we did put out a brochure when we were seeking applicants earlier in the year, and that is available from the city, so that brochure is available. It has a pretty good description there. And then, we did do a six-month eval at our last meeting, and there were no reportable actions. That happens in closed session, so there's, there's no reportable actions from that. So hopefully that covers everything, and if there's any other speakers, now's time.
I did not intend to speak, but given what was brought up about rumors and that sort of thing, and Councilmember Clovan's urgent call to action, I saw that on social media along with a post from someone who was about to be appointed to the CBCA board, that in two years, the city's going to collapse. Now, I've been attending these meetings for some time. I do know a little bit of finance, given what I do for a living, and it's strange how there is a group of people who, just because they don't like the mayor, now we're going down this route. I understand, yes, and I understand that our city manager's brought up that at some point, we might have to look at some way to generate revenue, but somehow, there is a group that's already on, we need to pass a parcel tax, and we need to pass it now. I don't know where they're being pushed to jump on this bandwagon, but we did spend a lot of money last year to find out that the overwhelming majority of Clayton is opposed to any idea like that. So for those who want to push that, go get the papers, get it on the ballot, get the signatures, and then campaign to pass it. I doubt you'll get past the signature phase, but it's a horrible way to campaign against the mayor. And to use the city manager's concerns as a way to push something, it's just wrong. And speaking of rumors, since the city manager's review was brought up, the rumor that the mayor was out to fire the city manager came from a past CBCA board member, the treasurer, to be specific. The organization has been engaging in a lot of bad things this year. Yes, I understand they're upset that they have to pay for things, but this is not a way to conduct business, and the fact that the city might in some way end up doing business with them, I don't think the citizenry is going to be okay with that, given that this is the way they behave. Thank you.
Yeah, I would say certainly there are, the city has financial challenges, but the sky is not falling. I think there's, there's issues that, that we need to address for sure, and, and they're not necessarily nothing issues, there's real issues, but, you know, we, we as a city will, will need to address how to do that, and I think we can do that in a prudent and thoughtful way. Any other comments from the public or non-agenda comments? Do we have anyone online?
No hands on Zoom.
Thank you. All right, then I will close public comment and move to item number three, 3A. This is an update on FY, I think it says 34, but it's supposed to be FY '24, Q1 budget status. Who's kicking us off today?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and just give a brief overview on this. Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, we looked at our Q1 revenue and expenses for our two main operating funds, which is the general fund and the landscape maintenance district fund. It is difficult, as kind of outlined a little bit in the report, with regards to seeing any trends or too much significant information through a Q1 specifically around revenue, as the majority of our revenue, because we're property tax-based in both funds significantly, happens in December and April. And so, and sales tax is done in arrears, and so we're probably getting our first couple of fiscal years' sales tax dribbling in around this time in September, and so it's difficult to see any trends there. That said, we do, as Propty has come in, implemented ongoing budget review with the department heads to ensure that everything is within their spending plans and their operating plans are moving as it should. As articulated in the report, we, which is very typical in a government setting, we look at a bottom-line budget for every department, and then the fund as a whole. We do that because, as outlined in the report, there are times when you change your spending plan through the year, you may not spend at a certain object and may want to spend more in a different object, but the net result or the bottom-line appropriation is still going to be met. And as we look at this Q1 review for the time that we have the information, July through September 30, we noticed that we are generally within line, nothing really stood out as any concern. We do prepay, as we outlined, our unfunded actuarial liability to PERS and our insurance premiums, which do send some of those amounts higher, because they are obviously spread over an entire year, they're, they're all fully paid upfront. But when we kind of extrapolate those out, you know, we feel comfortable with where departments are in their budgets as a whole going into the second quarter of the fiscal year. So with that, we're here to answer any questions.
And thank you for that, Brett, because I'm the one who kind of asked for an update on Q1, just because there was, I felt, a lot of misinformation on social media, and I wanted to have some clarity. So nothing stood out. I understand all the revenues are not in, and we'll be doing a more, a deeper dive when we do the mid-year review.
Correct.
But how did it compare to Q1 last year?
You know, we looked at it, and, you know, I mean, generally, you know, there was maybe some slight differences here and there, but again, it's hard, because the spending plan isn't necessarily linear year to year, and I wasn't here with the department heads to truly understand that as well, and we had a lot of vacancies in a variety of different roles. And so, you know, again, nothing stood out where I would feel like, again, on trend, you know, where we're concerned, and really, each year, you know, although trend is good, I think when you're trying to look at forecasting and five-year forecasts, you still want to understand where you are operating today and what that means of the spending plan. And so, in the talks we've had with department heads, we generally are, again, where we need to be. Some spending may have been slightly accelerated, because we need to get other stuff done, but it'll, you know, ease out as the rest of the fiscal year goes through. From a staffing perspective, you know, we have a few vacancies, but we've been mitigating that with contract employees, so, you know, it's probably an offset there, is what we see when looking at it. And so, I mean, net-net, I think, you know, we're going to spend, you know, if you just look at Q1, we're going to spend as our appropriations are kind of provided to us, which is maybe slightly different than in past years, only because my assumption is all these positions will still be filled nine months from now, which is a very different reality than what we've had in the recent past, in a sense of not just salary savings with employees, but projects actually being implemented, which is where costs can start to come into, and that's a good thing. You know, some savings where you have revenue more than expenses in a given annual budget in government is a good thing. Too much means you have a problem one way or another. Either you, as our case, have some vacancies and/or projects aren't getting completed in a timely fashion, and so it can be a good barometer to review, as we do at the end of every year, but for now, we're comfortable with where we're at moving forward for the remainder of, of the next quarter.
And the only other thing I had, and I just, this is more of a statement than a question, I was also asking our city manager for a sense of where we ended up fiscal year 2022, 2023, and that audit process is underway right now, and we will have that as an entire council sometime in December, correct?
December 19th is the scheduled day right now, that council meeting, correct?
Thank you.
So I understand that the property tax receipts are, we haven't yet, I forget the timing of when those are. They come twice a year, right?
December and April, yeah.
Because that's around when I pay them, so we get them around the same time.
Yeah, roughly, yeah. I mean, it's slightly delayed in tranches, but just generally, that's a good reference point.
Sure. So, but we know, we should know much earlier than the receipt of the funds what the role is going to be. The information of the property tax role, because it's based in arrears on sales and the assessed value plus any increases?
Yes.
Like, that information is available to us when?
So the role comes out, and HDL will do their kind of property assessment to us around probably, and then coming, what's the date? Is this November, December? Probably early spring is, is part of our budget process, is where we get those numbers from HDL, who essentially is our provider that assists with us in looking at the role. I think, you know, again, if we make assumptions that property taxes are going to be near what they're going to be, I think, I think that's fine for us. I think where the variability sits in our revenue sources is really in sales tax, you know, business licenses, those type of things that, you know, can have a little bit more variability, and in the case of business licenses in this coming year, it may be a little bit better, because we have a company now that will do a broader kind of search for us. Until I kind of see the fruits of that labor, you know, on, on the edges, you know, my guess is that our revenue will come in generally within budget one way or the other, is kind of what it looks like, because property tax is relatively consistent here. The only areas where there could be a little bit, and this would not be the timing where you'd see that, is supplementals can tend to be higher or lower, but our environment is probably not going to lend to as many supplementals as in years past, just because the interest rates and transfer tax, same reason, right? There can be some variability there, because that's less of a known in, in the beginning. But typically, in our case, you know, if we budgeted a 3% or 4% increase, which we believe we did, our property tax dollars should be somewhere around that level.
I guess, I think, just focusing on property tax, I think that represents somewhere close to 60-plus percent, and the others are much smaller.
Yeah.
I guess my point is, if we have the updated role in the springtime, that is, that should inform what we will receive in the December, April, because the following spring will be for the future roles, because it goes backwards, including the supplementals. And because the sales within Clayton are not large, I think we average about 100 home sales a year, give or take, we should know with some level of precision what the receipt will be, and we should not have to wait. I mean, obviously, we can't record the transaction, that's fine, but as far as an inquiry from, for us, I think if we're looking to see where is it going to come in, we should have available to us the, all the information necessary to answer that question now.
So the role, the roles are, remember, they're put out, there could be delinquencies, there could be adjustments to the roles, there's a variety of things that can do it, that, you know, the Treasury Tax Collector's Office and the county clerk will kind of be handling as part of the process, and the Artic Controller as well. They also, depending on some of the swaps that happen with the variety of legislation that may be passed, or maybe slight changes in our, you know, net amount that we would get relative to that, and so, yes, we have a good idea, that's where we use HDL to help us in budget with that. I think the level of precision is that, you know, it's generally within a percent or two of our estimate with HDL, and I think that's a reasonable estimate. There's no, in my opinion, perceived or real benefit in my 15 years of doing this to go deeper than that, because it doesn't necessarily change anything on a significant matter of what we would do with our operating plan, because we developed that during budget time. And so, if we kind of assume those property tax revenues are going to be within reason of what we estimated, you know, and we focus on the other revenue areas as far as trying to find out trends, I think that helps us more than it, than trying to dig to, to really get this finite level of property tax revenue. Additionally, with revenue sources that, like Clayton, where there is a lot less overall variability, we can generally assume that they're going to be, again, within kind of a reason of our estimates, and we'll just kind of monitor that at large. The expense side is really the control lever or mechanism we have to see if things are more or less than we anticipated in our, in our budget development.
Yeah, and I think, that is a good point. I think where I would go with this is, rather than look at the actual dollars, I think it would be, it'd be very, as a proxy for that, that's, that's easy to get, if we look at the number of home sales in the, in the assessment period from this year to last, you could get a quick proxy on, is it going to come in higher or lower directionally or on, right on? If we say, hey, we had 100 last year, we had 100 this year, the assessed value of sales was here, the sale price was here, you could very quickly approximate what that's going to be and get a much better sense of when, when the receipt comes in, we, we feel like this is directionally where the dollars are going to go. And I think that, rather than, like you say, rather than get into the nitty-gritty of the actual dollars, providing that directional movement is more informative and useful in terms of understanding where it's going. And I think, and like I said, that information is available to us, we have it, it's, there's nothing, there's nothing that we, that is not available to find out that right now.
And so that's, I think, when we do the budget process and working with HDL, that is what you're getting, essentially. They're doing that analysis, they're providing that information, and that's the basis for which we're putting in our property tax numbers. And so that's why I'm saying doing an additional analysis throughout the year until receipts come in, specifically in property tax, I don't think we're going to gain much more than what HDL is doing, because we would go to HDL to do that exact work, and they would probably tell me that it's going to be similar to what we talked about until the actual receipts come in, it'd be similar to what we talked about when your budget was developed. And so, we could ask them again, but I, my experience with them and doing this a long time in counties and cities both, you're not going to get too much more variability than the work they do when you're doing budget development in the spring.
Do we have year-over-year housing sales available to us?
You know, it's something we can ask for.
I think that'd be good as a, as a regular presentation item.
Sure, sure. We can, we can ask HDL to come up with some report to give us a status update as, you know, periodically throughout the year.
Yeah, because if you could see that, and then you could do compares from, you know, period to period, I think that directionally is enough, on the property tax side at least.
And then sales taxes?
Sales tax a little different.
A little different.
So I meet quarterly with Propty and HDL to look at that, and again, it's a trend analysis. You know, we can provide basic information there, but again, you know, much of the detail is protected. And again, we, we, you know, we'll work with them, see if any of the significant trends would change based on their estimate. Nothing, at least through our last review, which unfortunately, it's in arrears, so it's not even the quarter we're talking about, looked fine, and again, it didn't significantly change what they thought the future might hold for us, right? It tends to, especially in communities like this, be a slower churn of change, because most of our sales tax is a, you know, a grocery store probably is my guess, and restaurants, right? That's our makeup broadly, for at least the top groups, I would say, and so...
Walgreens, CVS, O.T.R., Safeway.
Right, right. You're going kind of, that's like, they're, they're going to all probably be in the top 20 runway or the other, which is, so variability there is a little less, whereas when you're in my old worlds of tourism in Napa, there could be a lot more variability as the economy shifts, right? Because the expendable next dollar could change. And so here, again, it's, the revenue side is not going to be where we're going to see the significant lever year over year, it's going to be, you know, the cost of doing business, literally on the expense side.
And then, the only other comment I had was, there, in the staff report, it indicates that the audit is not complete, but we should have unaudited financials available for year-end FY '23? Is that right? I mean, we provide them with something.
Well, we can run the reports. Yeah, we can run the reports, and we can, yeah, we can have that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I realize that the audit process takes time, face staff time and availability of all that, but for informational purposes, you know, having a quicker turnaround on, here's what we expect '23 to end at with unaudited results, and something like that, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Because we have to provide our auditors with something to audit.
Right.
And so, I think that should be enough, at least. Again, you know, we're not finalizing anything here, this is really just a discussion, so to, to get some directional indication would be helpful.
Sure.
Rather than waiting till December, I mean, you're essentially six months out of the year, so I would think that we'd have that much quicker.
Sure.
And do we have a sense at all where we ended up?
I would just wait and let us pull the reports and, and give you a better sense. You know, we're close enough to the 19th at this point, I think it's good to wait. To the mayor's point, we can look in future years to do it slightly differently.
Okay.
I do caveat a little bit. I think the mayor and I and many understand unaudited financials, the public, I caveat that a lot if we get, when we get to that point the next time we would do it, but as long as we have a significant caveat that, you know, these can change as the kind of the process goes through, we can definitely do something slightly faster to council, probably more in the October-ish time is probably something reasonable, and then we'll firm it up in the end of December when everything's tidied and done.
Well, and again, the discussion revolves around, you know, we were going off the fiscal cliff, and then we thought we may have ended up with a surplus, so that's why the community is anxious.
Yeah, you know, to that point, councilmember, I, I think that's where a lot of education will continue to need to happen from my office to the community about, you know, just because you have a surplus in a given fiscal year doesn't necessarily mean that your underlying issue has gone away. It means there could be a lot of other factors that allowed it to, to end up with revenues over expenses. Back to my point about not having staffed in their seats for a consistent amount of time and not completing projects, and frankly, potentially not doing a lot of things that you may need to do, and that's kind of how we will have a very broad, big conversation in February, as we talked about, really comprehensively looking at everything and understanding what that is. I think will be a good education for the community as we move forward in these discussions.
Thank you.
I don't have any other questions. All right.
Me neither.
I guess we have to take public comment on this. Anyone have any comment on, one second? Item 3A, open for public comment. Seeing no hands raised, is there any comment online? Okay, then I will close this item, and I think you don't need anything else from us. Excellent. All right, item 3B, this is quarterly financial report on the city's investment portfolio. Who is leading the discussion?
I will.
Perfect. Take us away.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor Juan and Councilmember Tupiano. In front of you today is the investment report for quarter ending September 30th, 2023. City continues to improve its net position on total investment. The total investment earned for this quarter is $52,000, with Camp earning $19,533.31, and UBS with $32,503.52. The interest disbursement for LEF is a month behind, so it is not on this report. The interest earned for the quarter was dispersed in October for LEF, and that was $4,809. The yield for liquid pool, money pool, LEF and Camp is five, sorry, yeah, LEF and Camp is 3.53% and 5.55%, respectively, and in this quarter, we did move money from LEF to Camp, because Camp was giving us the higher return. And in our UBS account, as the investments started to mature, we, we reinvested in higher investments, and per the committee's direction, we are focused on investing in US Treasuries. So the portfolio is in balance. Outside of this report, we've invested about $750,000, $700,000 in US Treasuries on October 17th, with average yield of 5.26%. Interest rate continues to remain between 5% to 6%, so we believe that we have time to invest the old, sorry, we have time to reinvest anything that matures with the lower interest with the higher yield. With this, I conclude my investment summary. Please let me know if you have any questions.
And the only thing I'll add really quick, the property that I were discussing is, you know, we've kind of looked at duration, and based on our cash flow, really one and a half year is probably the sweet spot, but no greater than two years. And so, you probably saw in the report, the duration actually went down, I think, by .2, or I don't know what that is, two months, I guess, in that thought process, for two and a half months. And so, we will keep trying to keep it between that one and a half to two-year bogey, I think that, from a cash management standpoint, is good for us. Now, as the interest curves change over time, that, that can prove to be good or bad. Right now, it's good, because short-term rates continue to be somewhat advantageous for us, so we're kind of in a sweet spot of a zone. As that shifts down, which may take a good while, you know, there may be, you know, not as big a benefit, but that's something we can deal with down the line when, when interest rates change.
Question, you want to go first? Okay. One thing that we've seen in the past is, I mean, we have the UBS report here, but I find it a little easier to look at, is that spreadsheet that you had produced a couple of times, that just shows just a straight listing of all of our holdings, the purchase date, the maturity date, and all the other... and all the other relevant information. Can we make that, that report a part of this, whatever we call it, this item on a go-forward basis?
So, you want the Excel report, correct? Okay.
I like Excel, but it, it just makes it easier to see and you can see all the relevant information. So, if we could take that as an item to include on a regular basis. And then also, what's missing here that I was looking for is a transaction detail over the period. I think we, we talked about our holdings and the expected cash flow and you had indicated some of the transactions that we've engaged in.
Right.
But an actual transaction detail that shows the, the activity.
For the interest?
No, just the buys and sells.
Oh, okay.
I think that would be helpful as a, as a part of it to add context to what's actually happening. So, I don't, I think that should be available from UBS, it's just not here. And then anything else outside, just so you could show, I mean, really, like, the easiest way, well, easiest is probably the wrong way to describe it. The way that I'm thinking about it is each quarter, you start with your balance and you show the walk. That just shows ups and downs, both buys, sells and, you know, income outflow and it should take you to your end balance. And you can do it by, you could do it by asset class and it should have, that should essentially give you any information you want. I just think it's a easier way to, well, sorry, not an easier way to produce, an easier way to consume the information.
Right, I, I will add that for the futures.
Yep. And then, the other question I had, actually, I think this is, you had, we had talked about this, I'll let you ask about the, the checking account stuff, but you go ahead.
Well, one of the questions I did have too is, our representative at UBS is, has very clear direction from us that we're transitioning from these low-yield CDs into high-yield treasury and other higher-yield products. So, that's not something we have to remind them on on a regular basis. They, they know as they mature.
Right, and as they mature, they, like, you know, if I see cash available on the account, I ask him what is available for us to invest on CDs and Treasuries and then based on that, we do decide, like, what to invest on. But, but we are focusing on higher-yield investments.
Okay, and because things are maturing all the time, right? And the other question that I had too was around the amount in our checking account is almost $1 million.
Well, that, that was as of September. I'm sure, you know, we had things coming up, so, which is why it's high. Right now, you know, it is around $400,000, $500,000. Plus, like, I do cash analysis every day based on, you know, I forecast, like, what is the obligations for the week? What's the payroll obligation? So, based on that, after all the outstanding checks has been taken into consideration, the balance, you know, even though it's $400,000, $500,000, but after taking all that out, it's usually around $200,000. So, I'm very careful about looking into that and moving money to CAM because that's very easy.
So, it's not even that high now that it appears on the report?
Yeah, perhaps an average, average daily cash balance would be more informative than a point in time that may look like it's inflated. I think that could also help add context.
Okay, okay, yep.
And the very last question that I had was, so, our, kind of our ROI for this past quarter was around $52,000. What are we striving to get to? Where should we be? Are we looking?
It depends on...
Because we're very conservative at this point.
Well, I, I think, I think with government investing, based on the government code, you're by nature conservative. I will say, we, we are striving to get a net increase every quarter while interest rates remain higher than the yields that's coming off, right? That's the simplest way to put it. There isn't a target interest rate that we're trying to shoot for at this point because frankly, we are only investing as things roll off, right, or mature. And so, it would be difficult to get a target rate because you're not really, and as we did the analysis to sell, you know, and provided that to you guys off, off the public item is that, you know, it doesn't make sense to sell losses, they're so big right now and reinvest in higher yields, the net, it just doesn't pan out. So, I'd say we continue to want to see increase. At some point, we will reach an equilibrium as old stuff rolls off and new stuff comes on where probably around what the two-year is, right, is going to be our benchmark because that's our duration area is one and a half to two years. Ultimately, that's our kind of loose benchmark. It's a little clouded now though because that's so high and went up so parabolically and we had so much old stuff that it's going to take a while for that to kind of ferret out on its own. But that would be ultimately in a normalized situation where we would kind of shoot for because our duration would then match that benchmark. The other thing to consider for this, or if there are new members appointed on the 17th of December for the next year, is I know we took out corporate bonds in our investment policy, but there are, is going to be significant, I think, benefits to corporate debt in the coming years as interest rates have more fluctuation. You know, I was in corporate debt at, you know, the tune of $150 to $200 million when I managed a $600 million fund for the county. There, they are, yes, they have a slightly more inherent risk than US Treasuries, but some of these companies that you had invested in like Johnson &amp; Johnson or Apple corporate debt or US Bank, bank-level debt, almost have better credit ratings than the United States government. So, I, I think it's something to consider down the line as potentially maybe bringing back, maybe not at the 25% level that's allowed under government code, but some semblance of a percentage to start to maybe baby-put them back in the portfolio. They're also highly liquid like a treasury, so we could also, if we had to, hopefully, whenever we deal with cash in this way, we could sell them as well. Again, just something to consider down the line, not at today.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Brett.
No, that was, I, yeah, I, for me, I, I really like to see the other pieces of information to add context to where our position is. So, if you could, even prior to our next meeting, if you could get a, yeah, I'd like to look at it just because, I don't know, that's how I ingest the information. It could just be a preference, but it helps.
I can do that, yeah.
It helps that. And then, so have, since, what I would look at on that information is, since our last meeting, I know that there have been a few items that have rolled off and in looking at this schedule, sorry, I'm a little blind now for some reason. And looking at the schedule here of our current holdings, it does seem like there's a few that are coming off. So, have, have all of our purchases been in Treasuries in the last sometime interval? Or are we still doing a mix or how is that working right now?
So, yes, I want to say yes. We have been focusing on Treasuries and we have been buying Treasuries. Only today, this morning, I, we did invest $250,000 in CDs because it was a better return. So, that was the only reason, but other than that, yes, it has been in Treasuries.
Okay, yeah, I, yeah, if I could see the, if we could get information on the, the mix, that'd be great. But I think that is the only other question I had right now. I'll open it up for public comment and then we can... If anyone has any public comment on item 3B, now is your time.
Thank you, Mayor. So, to our finance director, all the information the mayor is asking for, what it looks like UBS is giving you, given I did 30 years in this business, looks like it's their bond report. I'm pretty sure they do a monthly statement. And then your trade confirms, I'm sure they provide us with that. You wouldn't have to kill yourself making reports. I think it'd be better, I mean, I would like it if the statements were posted every month as they came in so that all of the citizenry can look at it. I certainly have been following this portfolio for some time. The other issue too is Treasuries. The schedule for the auction is on the treasury website. You can pretty much do T-bills every week. I know I've been doing that all year at my firm, so you don't have to wait for the broker to call you. And lastly, it's probably preferable to buy on the auction than from UBS's inventory because they mark it up. Five and a quarter on a last T-bill purchase actually sounds low to me. I've been buying them at 5.5 and 5.6 by participating on the auction. Maybe UBS charges you a small fee. They have an incentive to sell from the inventory because they can mark it up and that's how they make a commission. There's nothing wrong with that, it's just, it's what's in your best interest, not theirs. Lastly, you know, in terms of where things are going and corporate bonds and that sort of thing, the Treasuries are probably the most liquid market in the world and let's not forget that the federal government has unlimited taxing power. After '08, watching what happened with many corporations, not somewhere I'd want to see our money tied up, at least until regulations and covenants got stronger on corporate bonds. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any public comment? A show of hands is sufficient. Do we have anyone online?
Mayor, there are no hands on Zoom.
Thank you. I was looking at our treasurer. Okay, then I will close public comment. Was there anything else that you'd like to add on this one?
No, not on this one. I just, I had one final question and remind me when we're going to talk about our reserve policy.
So, February as well. So, the February 19th, don't quote me on that date, everybody. The second meeting in February for the council is going to be, well, unless we decide to do a special meeting separate to make it on its own, will be a very comprehensive day on a five-year forecast, fund balance policy, because they're, they're going to be connected, the kind of needs that we need to do, the tie-in of the fund balance policy and the operating budget, roads condition. It'll all be kind of one very big conversation because as we've talked about at this committee before, actions needed to, to enhance some, some capital dollars will change our balances and available to invest, which is a good thing because we're putting money into the public and also then changes our net return and interest. And that's why, you know, as we continue to talk and I talk to budget hearings in June, interest income is good in the sense that, you know, be conservative and let it be a driver that helps the budget, but going too far can create issues where you lose flexibility and other spending needs. And, and so, I think we do a good job of that here. It's not a worry, but it's something to always keep kind of front of mind is not being so aggressive that you can't spend those capital reserve dollars on appropriate things that may be needed larger and more broader for the community.
Well, because our current reserve policy is at 75%, correct? And we're over 100%?
We're well over, yeah, if you take an ARPA, which is really general fund as well, we're at 110% or 120%. And so, there are some discussions we need to have with councils about, you know, not draining it down, but, but what's an appropriate, you know, general reserve use for cash flow needs in dry periods between December and April, as we talked about, when a majority of our money comes in, emergency reserves for bigger things. And then, you have a lot of capital needs throughout the city and could we put that other money to use in a more appropriate way? And that's kind of what the discussion will be in February.
Okay, thank you, Brett.
All right, well, then with that, that, just making sure, that concludes our last item. And so, I would adjourn, so we are ahead of schedule. Was there anything else that staff would like to add?
No, I think as we kind of come into the next budget audit, which could be you two again or a new group, we'll work with that group immediately to develop a very consistent 12-month schedule based on the budget needs as we develop budget that we'd come back to the committee, the investment reports and kind of time it up. So, we kind of know when we'll meet and not meet more broadly and easier, I think, because there is some dry periods throughout the year where there's really not a need, but there is a lot of, I think, more really compressed time during the budget that I may need more than one. And so, working with, whether it's, it's mayor yourself and councilmember Trupiano, if you're still on the committee or the new committee, that'll be kind of our next meeting probably in January where we really have that discussion.
And that was my last question, when is the next budget audit committee meeting?
I think, I think January probably is good. We may not have an investment report because of the timing, but, but it may be good just to get that new committee seated, even if it is yourselves and come up with the schedule, if nothing else, on just get us, get us where we need to be so that it's consistent and everyone knows their, because schedules, as you all know, is hard for you guys with everything going on.
Actually, speaking of that, I do think it's a good call-out that if there's a place on our website that we could publish the monthly statements from UBS because it's such a big portion of our portfolio is at UBS and it essentially is available to us.
Yeah, it's a public document.
In the interest of transparency, I think that'd be great.
Sure, no problem, easy, yep, yep.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And then, we adjourn for 444.